I'll call the meeting to order for January 10, 2012. It's approximately 6:40 PM. The invocation will be done by Bud Christ.
I'm sorry. President Reverend Paul Anderson, if he's in the room.
Not here. Bud, can you lead us in the invocation, please? And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, also, I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence for the Maryville soldier that was killed over Afghanistan.
Brian?
Do you have any father, as we gather this evening? Let us remember the family of the soldiers that were lost in battle. The Maryville soldier. Be with those families and the families surrounding them. Be with this council as we starting new year. And this community as we work together in joining hands as we prepare to make it a better community. Be with each one this evening. Be with the visitors in our audience. And remember those that are not here this evening in town. Be with each family that represents our town and our community across the county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
At the Pledge of Allegiance instituted by the United States of America and the Republic of America stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano? Here.
Barron?
Pettit?
Here.
Whiting?
Here.
Goralcheck?
Here, sixth president. Election, petitions, communications, and remonstration. At this time, I want to turn in my conflict of interest statement for Gene Gernsy.
There's mine.
And also, I'm going to turn in mine also.
So you received conflict of interest statements from Mrs. Miano, Mr. Hardaway, and Mr. Goralcheck. At this time, I'd like to guess close my presidency out, and I just wanted to thank everybody that worked along with me last year and for, I think, a stellar year. We had a lot that got accomplished. I mean, we were $1.2 million in the hole, finished above board. We had a few new businesses come to town. And just like to thank everybody that worked with me last year. At this time, I'll open up the election of the officers for 2012.
I'd like to make a motion for position of president goes to Sean Pettit.
Motion by Mrs. Miano for the office of president for Mr. Sean Pettit. Seconded by Mr. Whiting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Gavel's yours, my friend.
Thank you. Boy, you can't wait to get out of the chair, can you? I like the paper trail with you, Goralcheck.
All right, thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, next, Chair will entertain a motion for nominations for vice president for 2012.
At this time, I'll make a motion to nominate Carol Miano for vice chairman.
Motion by Mr. Goralcheck, seconded by Mr. Spann to nominate Carol Miano as vice president. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Miano.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you. At this time, there are some boards that we need to also fill, specifically, our police commission. I think we've all gotten letters in our packets, Howard. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion for candidates for the 2012 Maryville Police Commission.
I make the motion for Ted Kennedy.
Second.
Make a motion for...
Why don't we do one at a time? If you don't mind, yes, since we have a second. Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck for Ted Kennedy to serve on the Maryville Police Commission. And for the record, the Maryville Police Commission is a bipartisan organization, and the typical appointments have been two Democrats and one Republican. Mr. Kennedy would be filling the Republican position. Any further discussion? That's a good question. Yeah, this, why don't we do that? Why don't we make this the one-year appointment?
Yeah, because they have to be staggered.
They have to be staggered. So this will be the one-year appointment. And it'll serve all of 2012, and then this appointment will come up again next year, and we'll stagger it accordingly. Okay. Are there any further questions on the motion? Mr. Page, does that sound appropriate?
It does.
Howard, are we okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of Mr. Kennedy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Kennedy has been appointed to a one-year term on the Maryville Police Commission. We also obviously need two other members. Chair will entertain a motion for additional membership.
Mr. President, I nominate, can't think of his name, what's the guy's name, Joe? Rick, his wife is the, on the school board. Genitus. Mr. Genitus. Bob Genitus.
Genitus?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Whiting to appoint Bob Genitus to the police commission. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Motion dies two to four. Chair will open it up for other nominations.
I'd like to make a motion for Rick Bella.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to appoint Rick Bella to a two-year term on the, is that what, we're going to stagger these, Howard? Is that how we need to do it?
Joe, I think you have to.
Is it two, Joe? All right, this will be for the two-year term, which will be 2012, 2013. Any discussion on Mr. Bella? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Bella is appointed to a two-year term on the Maryville Police Commission for 2012 and 2013. We need one more on a three-year term.
I'd like to make a motion for Pete Gip for a three-year term.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Spann to appoint Pete Gip to a three-year term on the Maryville Police Commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Do I need a roll call on that, Mr. Page?
You do, and to determine your numbers, or a show of hands.
Mr. Gernsy, roll call vote on Mr. Gip.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
No.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
No.
Goralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to two. Police commission for this year will be Rick Bella, Pete Gip, and Ted Kennedy. That brings us to the Plan Commission. There is an opening, again, has to be bipartisan. We currently have a Republican member and a Democratic member. We need one of each to serve new four-year term. I believe they're four-year terms, Dorinda? Okay, these would be four-year terms for the Plan Commission.
At this time, I would nominate Pam Palmetier for the Plan Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goralcheck, seconded by Mrs. Miano to appoint Pam Palmetier as the, would she be the Democratic appointee, Mr. Goralcheck? All right. Democratic appointee to the Plan Commission, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
No.
Miano?
Yes.
Barron? I'm sorry. Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
No.
Goralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to two. The other appointment needs to be a Republican designee. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion for Rick Holtz.
Second.
Recommend a roll call vote.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Spann to appoint Rick Holtz as a Republican appointee to the Maryville Plan Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. At this time, we also need, and I believe, Dorinda, when we were given the list of appointments, it's within my authority as Town Council President to move a Plan Commission member who's currently serving onto the Board of Zoning Appeals. And at this time, I will appoint Julie Olthoff to replace Ted Kennedy as the Republican appointee to the Board of Zoning Appeals, since Ted's been moved up to the Police Commission. So the current Board of Zoning Appeals, Tim Fortier's term is still in place, Chuck Stojakovic's term is still in place. Mrs. Olthoff will replace Mr. Kennedy. And then, one member will be elected when the Plan Commission meets. They will send a member over to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There is an opening for one member on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Chair will open up nominations for appointments to fill that slot, which again, is filling Mr. Gip's slot, who was appointed to the Police Commission.
Mr. Minchuck is on that board now, or?
Mr. Minchuck was on the Plan Commission and was assigned by the Plan Commission to the BZA, was he not, Dorinda? Okay.
So then, I make a motion that we put John Minchuck on as a BZ.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goralcheck, oops, seconded by Mrs. Miano to appoint John Minchuck to fill out the remaining term of Pete Gip's appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is that correct, Dorinda? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The remainder of the appointments with redevelopment, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more appointment. Chair will entertain a motion for the Stormwater Management Board. There's one position that's up. Floor is open for nominations for that.
Mr. President, I make a motion Barbara Gosden be retained on the Stormwater Board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to retain Barb Gosden to the Maryville Stormwater Management Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will also have committee assignments. If you guys want to get me your interest in the committees that you want to serve on. There's also a NERPC and Lake County Solid Waste Management District Redevelopment Commission, and then the committee structures, also the Ross Township Fire Territory Board. So we can, we'll have those committee assignments in two weeks.
Fire Territory Board was a four-year appointment.
Was it a four-year appointment for you and Mr. Whiting?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll reauthorize. Mr. Page, do we need, we don't need to reauthorize them since their term's not up, do we?
Not if their terms are up.
Okay, so then, Mr. Whiting and Mr. Goralcheck are back with the Ross Township Fire Territory Board until their term expires, so. That's all I have. Next item on the agenda is proclamation for Black History Month.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Whiting for the proclamation for Black History Month. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, mending of the agenda, to introduce a Resolution 1201 opposing the right-to-work legislation that is going on. Webster's Dictionary defines a scab, a worker who refuses to join a union and to support their union. So at this time, I would like to make a motion for this, and Howard, could you please?
We have to make the motion. We have to amend the agenda first.
We have copies, or we can read this?
Yes.
Yeah, they were going to end up back.
No, I have copies.
Motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Spann to add Resolution 12-01 to the agenda tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, as those are being passed around, we'll pick that up under resolutions. Next item on the, is there anything else for petitions, communications?
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, seeing none, consent agenda. We have accounts payable, register voucher approval, January 10, 2012.
Hang on a second, Sean. Don't we have to vote on that, or we amended the agenda?
Yeah, we, it passed six to zero.
Okay.
It'll come up under the resolutions.
Okay.
Back to the consent agenda, accounts payable, register voucher approval, January 10, 2012, and also the approval of Town Council minutes of December 27, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, for tonight, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, ladies and gentlemen, we'll follow the old committee assignments until we meet in two weeks. Under budget and finance, to either Mr. Gernsy or Mr. Fink, the collection of prior EMS billing invoices. Gene?
We have, we have, for a while there, we've had EMS bills on the books. State Board of Accounts has suggested, not only suggested, but indicated that we need to either write those bills off or attempt to get those collected, and Gene has some information on a collection strategy that he's come up with.
I talked to Charlie Pride, and the Global Collection Agency in Maryville is planning to do it, and we need council approval to do it.
Any questions for Gene or discussion?
Medicaid, Medicare patients will not be, those people will be untouched there. Whether the shows paid for, that was paid for the medical bills, that's it.
I make a motion to use the collection service, what's the name? Huh?
Global Collection.
Govert Collection Agency for the EMS bills, outstanding invoices.
Seconding it.
Motion by Mr. Goralcheck, seconded by Mr. Whiting to retain Govert Collection Agency to retain, to collect the unpaid EMS bills with the exclusion of the Medicare and Medicaid accounts. They're a percentage, are they a percentage, Gene?
It's a percentage. That it could be stated?
Yeah, it's 65%.
As long as the council's aware of that.
We get 65%?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I have nothing else, Gene, unless you and Howard have anything on the budget for now.
Yes, sir.
All right, Public Works, Mrs. Miano?
Yes, I have one question for Bruce. The intersection of Broadway and Route 30 seems to have a lot of seepage of water coming from underneath. It has been very icy there recently. I guess there has been salt being spread there. What is the latest on that, please?
Well, we had contacted NDOT about it, and we've also contacted the Water Department. This started like three, four months ago. Excuse me. The Water Department had gone out there and did an initial investigation and said that their water line didn't have a leak in it, even though it runs right through there. They suspected maybe it was a phone duct that was sitting full of water that was bumping the water up through the road. If you look, it actually comes up through the, would be the east straight-through lane, heading southbound, and it runs down across and down into the curb, and that's where you're getting all the icing. Well, as of last week, the water company was back out there again Thursday and Friday.
Right, I called them out there.
And they had talked to NDOT, and NDOT had called them and asked them to go back out there and investigate it again. So they're back out there, double, triple-checking anything, and they were going to give me a call once the determination was made of what was causing the water. But it's got to be a water line, and if it's not underneath the road, it could be 30 feet down, but that's where it's finding a place to pump through. So there's got to be a leak in that line somewhere. They just got to find it.
Okay.
That's what the issue is, and again, we made those phone calls in September saying, you're going to have some issues out here. But until it got bad, nobody really, even NDOT really didn't do anything until they started calling them finally to try to fix it.
I noticed a pothole there, it's filled with water, so it is definitely coming up from underground.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Miano?
No, that'll be it.
Okay. Council affairs, I don't know if anyone has any report on that yet.
No report.
Okay. Personnel policy and employee benefits, I don't have anything, obviously, well, one thing, we will be doing the health insurance renewal by April 1st, correct, Howard? And they're doing an analysis right now on all that, so.
That's correct. We have, yeah, just real quick, we've got, we've got some preliminary quotes back from the IAC Medical Trust, so we're going to take a look at that, and we're going to take a look at fully insured quotes, and then we'll take a look at our standard self-funding models.
All right. Public safety, Mr. Whiting?
Yeah, we've been working on a collective bargaining agreement, and the agreement, I'm making the motion, we accept the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Maryville and the FOP, Maryville Lodge 168.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Spann to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Maryville and the Fernal Order Police, Maryville Lodge 168. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that this is the latest and greatest revision that we've had. I'm not sure who the president is now, can you, can you come up to the?
Come on up and...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Gonzalez, for those of you that don't know me, new council or the new FOP president. As long as you have number nine on the bottom of your contract, that is the most recent that we have.
Yes, we have, okay. All right. Any other questions?
I just think that this contract speaks volumes of what's going on in the state that we in Maryville are actually supporting the FOP to have a contract with the Town of Maryville.
Anything else?
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Anything else? Chief?
Go ahead and pass it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry. Roll call, Gene.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to nothing now. All right. Mrs. Barron is out of town in Indianapolis at the IAC Boot Camp for newly-elected officials, so we'll, does anybody have anything for Parks?
Bud Christ has a report for...
Okay, we will, Environmental Affairs. Stormwater Board President Bud Christ. I think we have information, purchase of property located at 7455 Taff Street for $140,280 for the Taff Street drainage project. Mr. Christ?
That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
And congratulations.
Thank you, I think.
And Tom did a good job last year.
Can you state your name and address for the?
Yes.
It's this building, I think. Public Works. On January 3rd, the Stormwater Board approved that purchase with the Depping Trust, and I have signed, I think you have one too.
We've made, we've added one to each package.
That, they have signed it. We closed the deal on the Hinsbrook property with Ron McCully. That's finished. Now we'll proceed to approve it this evening, we'll proceed to close it on the Depping property on 73rd, or 7455, that's just east of the Dairy Queen on 73rd Avenue, in the low spot there, just next to the Nipsco little substation. That puts it in my, where you're at.
Okay. Make a motion that we purchase the property at 7455 Taff Street for the amount of $140,280.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goralcheck, seconded by Mr. Whiting to purchase the property at 7455 Taff Street. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Gene, roll call, please.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Next item, elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano?
I have none, none to report.
Okay. Economic development, I have nothing as of now. Utility liaison, Mr. Whiting?
No report.
Okay. General orders, ordinances on first reading, ordinance 1201 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 11-39 and fixing the salaries and pay for employees at the Town of Maryville, Indiana for the calendar year 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to approve ordinance 12-01 on first reading. Any questions on the ordinance, ladies and gentlemen? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to zero. Ordinance, second reading ordinance is ordinance 11-64.
I think we took care of this at our last meeting, both in first reading and second reading, didn't we, Matt?
We suspended the rules and did...
Right.
We did suspend the rules, but it was an advertised ordinance, and it needs to be read on second reading, because it was an advert, it was, it was an ordinance that had to be advertised, and so we really couldn't have suspended the rules, so we have to read it, reread it again on second reading in order to legally be adoptable. So my suggestion would be to reread this on second reading, because that's what the, it's a public hearing, and that's what the ad calls for.
Mr. Page?
No downside, do it.
Okay. An ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending the current ordinance for flood hazard areas for the Town of Maryville, Indiana.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to approve ordinance 11-64 on second reading. This, again, being public comment and advertised, as Mr. Fink alluded to. Is there anyone to speak in favor or opposition to this ordinance? Going once, twice, public hearing closed. Back to the council. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Goralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to zero. And we added Resolution 12-01, which is a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, opposing right-to-work legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Goralcheck to approve Resolution-1201. Any discussion on the motion? Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck to approve Resolution dash 1201.
Why don't you have two 1201s?
Oops. Any discussion on the motion?
Do you wait a minute?
I think it should be 1202.
1202, my apologies, that's my mistake.
1202, we've just approved 1201.
What was resolu...
No, that's an ordinance.
Oh, that's one's an ordinance.
This is a resolution, one's an ordinance.
Never mind. I'll write first.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on Resolution 1201?
Mr. President, I think Mrs. Miano wants to have it read into the record.
Yes, I would like to have it...
Would you like it to have it read in the record?
Please.
Should I?
Yes, please, Howard, thank you.
Resolution 1201, resolution of the Town Council of Mariville, Indiana, opposing right-to-work legislation. Whereas the National Nit Labor Relations Act and federal law granted basic collective bargaining rights nearly nine decades ago, whereas tens of millions of workers won union representation and gained entrance into the middle class as a result of the victories they won through their collective bargaining agreements, and whereas through many union victories, bargaining rights were established, and as a result, millions of public and private sector workers were able to win fair wages, affordable healthcare, retirement security, and a strong voice on the job, and whereas a dramatic reduction in union density has resulted in reduction of compensation levels for all workers, and whereas, led by Governor Scott Walker and John Kasich, laws were passed in Wisconsin and Ohio which eviscerated the bargaining rights of employees in those states, and whereas governors and legislators in other states from coast to coast jumped on the bandwagon to abrode bargaining rights and attempt to strip unions of their ability to both negotiate contracts and advance the political and legislative interests of their members, and whereas some of the Indiana state legislators are attempting to pass legislation to deny collective bargaining rights to thousands of employees, and whereas labor unions help build the middle class by securing good wages, benefits, and working conditions for millions of families, and has been at the forefront in civil rights and social progressive causes, and whereas hard-fought legislation initiatives backed by labor unions have benefited all workers by guaranteeing certain rights and making it possible to have financial and retirement security, and whereas prevailing wage, union shop security, and employee collective bargaining rights have benefited workers and consumers and created a vibrant middle class necessary in maintaining a strong national economy, and whereas expected attacks include but are not limited to collective bargaining, right-to-work, prevailing wage, public services, pensions, project labor agreements, union campaign activity, overtime pay, privatization, minimum wage, injured worker benefits, unemployment compensation, and whereas right-to-work laws lower wages for everyone, the average worker in states with right-to-work for less laws make $5,538 a year less than workers in other states, $39,169 compared to $44,707 because the higher wages worker, working, because, excuse me, period, because of the higher wages, working families in states without these laws also benefit from healthier tax bases that improve their quality of life, whereas median household income in states with these laws are $6,185 less than in other states, whereas in states with right-to-work for less laws, 28.3% of jobs are in low-wage occupations compared with 19.5% of jobs in other states, whereas people in states with right-to-work for less laws are more likely to be uninsured, 16.7% compared with 13.5% overall among children, that's 10.4% versus 7.5%, whereas the rate of workplace deaths is 52.9% higher in states with these laws, according to the Bureau of Labor statistics, whereas Oklahoma is the most important case on right-to-work legislation, and it is the most recent case. All serious statistical analyses that hold, all other things equal, find right-to-work had no statistical impact on employment or unemployment. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Mariville, Indiana as follows, that the Town of Mariville formally recognizes right-to-work as an attack on all Indiana workers, union or otherwise, and let it be known that the elected officers of the Town of Mariville are thoroughly opposed to right-to-work legislation, duly resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Mariville, Lake County, Indiana, um, this 10th day, uh, of January 2012.
All right, that is read into the record now, again, the motion by Mr. Hardaway, and a second by Mr. Guralcheck. I will editorialize, uh, just briefly, this morning, this topic was brought up at the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce, our neighbors to the south, uh, the city of Crown Point have been approached, uh, on this topic as well, um, I did not want to speak for the other six members, uh, I have my own feelings on it, I'm very, very happy, uh, with this resolution, um, it's, uh, it's kind of a shame that we've been fighting 35 years for fiscal home rule with the General Assembly, and yet they can jam this thing down our throats in a matter of, uh, a couple of months, um, obviously our message, Tom, didn't get across to the governor the last time he was here for modern drop-forg, but that's another topic for another discussion, so...
Do you want me to call him? I got it.
I bet you have him on speed dial still.
(laughing).
With that, Mr. Guernsey, will you, uh, take a, a roll call vote, please?
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Guralcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries, hopefully we can, uh, do something before Thursday, unfortunately, so keep our fingers crossed. Thank you, Carol and Howard, uh, for, uh, getting this put together in short notice. All right, I believe there are no BZA actions, Dorinda. All right, uh, next item is old business, anybody, any council with old business? Seeing none, any new business?
Yeah, I got one thing, the, uh, we've got a business down in 5400 Block of Broadway, Railroad Salvage, that, uh, we've been diligently working on, trying to get them to clean up. They will be coming before the Hearing Board, uh, the 31st of January, so we make a determination whether or not we're gonna revoke their license or not.
Is that in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No, it's from, for Howard. Their business...
It's a business license issue, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, we have to, uh, we cannot permit businesses to come into the town and set up shop and give us the type of product that this guy was giving us, and accept it.
Yeah, it said something about no storage on the outside or whatever.
They said no storage on the outside, and then...
From what the pictures I seen, it...
Exactly.
Looks like he was storing his neighbor's stuff, too.
Yeah, he's storing over there across the lot, too, I noticed.
Okay.
Just so everybody will be aware of, in case you hear it, that's coming down the pipe.
All righty. Any other new business?
Yes, I have.
Miano?
AARP will begin doing taxes on February 1st, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9 to 12. It's gonna be for, uh, four people per hour. Anyone can call 769-3501, as through the Clerk Treasurers Office. Also, I would like to add any health services that we have coming Monday, January 16th, we do this for our seniors and people with disabilities. It will be canceled due to the holiday, it will be rescheduled again for February the 3rd, Monday of the month.
Any other public, uh, new business? Mr. Span?
Well, the next workshop, I'd like to bring in a proposal for permit for, uh, public safety, and, uh, if it, if it, uh, it's a good proposal, and it probably will involve the town business.
Okay. All right. Get with Mr. Uh, Mr. Fink to put that on the agenda under, uh, the Public Safety Committee. Any other new business from council?
Yes.
Mr. Guralcheck?
I would ask that, uh, this time that you would reappoint me to the, um, Lake County Solid Waste Board, because, um, election of officers are gonna be coming up there soon.
Uh, when is their next meeting, Tom?
Uh, this, third, Thursday.
Yeah, next week?
Yes.
No, th- this week?
19th?
19th.
The 19th, yeah, we won't have another meeting. Okay, well, why don't we do the same thing with, with NERCY then, too, 'cause I know I have a full commission meeting on, on January 19th, if it would, uh, uh, if the council could indulge, uh, the chair, uh, by reappointing Mr. Guralcheck.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, seconded by Mr. Hardaway to reappoint Tom Guralcheck to the Lake County Solid Waste Management District as Mariville's appointee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Tom, and then also, again, with the full commission of NERCY, um, I would like to serve the town, uh, in that capacity as well, again, I've been doing it for eight years, so...
Motion for Mr. Pettit to be our representative to NERCY.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guralcheck, seconded by Mr. Whiting, uh, to appoint, uh, myself to the NERCY Commissioner role, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. In fact, Bruce, you and I need to talk about some NERCY business, uh, after we're done with, uh, federal aid money. Okay. Um, is there any other new business for the council? Seeing none?
I guess, uh, at Lake, we have an update on Taft Street a little bit, pass it up when I got it.
I think that we could do that on his next day, not his first day, remember?
Yeah, his first day was pretty full, if I remember correctly, I don't know what his third day's gonna be like. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, just a quick update on Taft Street, uh, we met on site today with NDOT, uh, to coordinate any additional permitting requirements, we met with their environmental staff, looked at the wetlands and, uh, some Rule 5 permitting that's gonna be needed for that particular phase of the project. Um, we also are scheduling a meeting with Corps of Engineers on January 25th, uh, to have some jurisdictional determinations done, that can get us around some permitting as well. Um, for the new Stormwater Center, we, uh, actually Bud and I went to Chicago, and, uh, we went to a kickoff meeting with Camp Dresser McGee, uh, we discussed several concept goals and desired metrics, and, uh, met the project team. Um, they're drafting a schedule for the project task and target dates, and, uh, we'll keep you informed as this progresses, uh, probably have a formal presentation and a visual aid, uh, along with that, uh, in the future here, in the near future. Uh, for Bell Oaks, uh, there was a meeting yesterday with representatives from the Canadian National Railway and a culvert that needs to be replaced out there, um, they were cooperative, and, uh, they anticipate replacing that project, uh, the soonest would be within a few months, so...
Yeah, it could be like February, or, it's just all weather preventing, if it gets a real rainy spring, but they're out there, they're committed to do it, they said it needs to be replaced, um, it's just, it's a tough access to get back there, that's what it comes down to, so...
It's gonna be weather dependent, pretty much, and, uh, we'll keep on them with their cooperation and make sure it gets followed through with. Um, the flood hazard ordinance, I'll forward all that information to DNR Division of Water and FEMA, let them know that, um, we are in compliance with all the regulations so that, um, residents can continue getting, uh, flood insurance, um, and I actually have a lot of residents coming in to, uh, look at the new maps and, uh, to try and assess whether they are in or out, uh, so that's been ongoing. Um, for the stormwater mapping, uh, working with Robinson Engineering on that, um, actually this is critical that we have this done before we get into our, our stormwater master plan updates. Um, under grant coordination, I'm working with Val Williams, she's the senior grant writer for Robinson Engineering.